Touch them, touch their minds, touch their hearts. Then God, we ask a special anointing upon this city. Lord God, we ask that you would just bless right now with the blessings you see us standing in need of. And Lord God, we be ever so careful to give you the praise, to give you the honor and to give you the glory, because you're truly worthy to be praised. Lord God, we just thank you for you being God and being God on by yourself. And then, Lord, at the end of the day, we ask that you would just continue to keep us in your keeping care, hold us in the hollow of your hand. Now, Lord, let the words of my mouth, the meditations of thy heart be acceptable in thy sight. Oh, Lord, my strength and my redeemer, in Jesus' name we pray, and every heart said amen.
Amen. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel in motion on the work session minutes for the 18th of January?
Mr. President, move to the dock.
Call the favor, raise your hand.
Eight with one abstention.
Okay. Need a motion on the regular council minimum minutes for the 18th of January?
Mr. President, move to the dock.
Call the favor, raise your hand.
Eight with one abstention.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, you're up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see everybody.
Welcome back.
Here, sorry, we're in DC for the last meeting and subsequent to that had my own issues that I'll talk about in just a second. So it is good, good to be back here and I want to thank everyone who reached out with prayers and thoughts as we were dealing with my bout with COVID, because I'm one of the latest that we've had. But certainly I'm grateful that my symptoms were mild relatively compared to others. Again, we have been vaccinated and boosted, but nonetheless, I'm grateful for that. Just want to give you just some numbers again, just to remind everyone that I think things are getting a lot better despite my recent setback. Montgomery County has fifty-two thousand five hundred and fifty confirmed COVID-19 cases as of January 31st. That's a hundred and fifty plus a hundred and fifty-four that we've had since that time. There have been eight hundred and fourteen COVID-related deaths that we've seen unfortunately. But the case risk has been elevated to be listed as a high risk for community transmission. So we do want to keep that on the forefront. And that was certainly one of the reasons why I wanted to just let, you know, the public know one while I'll be out of sight, but also let people know that everybody's still dealing with it, even in the place where they were testing us every day. And they use all the tests that you could use in order to track that, to try to minimize that transmission. So even in that type of space where masks were mandated and so forth, there was still that exposure to it. So we just want to remain vigilant in this challenge that we're dealing with, not only as a community, but we're still dealing with across the country and talking with our healthcare providers. We are seeing some of those same trends really across the state. And I also want to thank Dr. Scott Harris for being a great asset and educating me versus what I was reading and what I've been told and kind of deciphering a lot of that for me. So he was one of our community heroes last year, continues to do great work as a director for the Alabama Department of Public Health. Now, with that said, I want to get to some great news that we have. And that is the announcement that we have regarding the inland port. It's a great start to this new year and it's one of those things that we believe will be transformational far beyond just where it'll be physically located because of the economic space that allows us to now play in. This is a $54 million project that will create over 2,600 jobs for our community. This is on top of other things that we're doing as it relates to infrastructure, investment and partnerships with both Seaspire and certainly the Amazon announcement that we had a few months back. I think when you look at some of these results, you see the work between the city, you've seen the work with the county and certainly working with our partners at the state and federal level. I've also brought in our school system into these conversations, because one of the things that we're consistently asked is, do we have the workforce? Since they want to know, do we have the talent needed to fill these jobs? And we believe that we do have the talent. We believe that we have partnerships here with our K-12 schools, our two-year colleges. And I know that we have our four, one of our four-year colleges represented here, our oldest four-year college represented here at Alabama State University. So we believe that we've got the talent pool necessary to fill these good-paid jobs with benefits that will provide so much opportunity, not only for this city, but for the region. And for those who don't know the backstory, you've got before you a little bit of where this is located. That's off Highway 31 just south of West South Boulevard and obviously a little bit north of Hyundai Boulevard, right there in this area where we believe is prime development. As you can see, look over to the left, you see the runway for the airport. We believe this makes our prospects for cargo and freight delivery and expansion a lot more possible with our airport to bring in more economic development to this city and to this region. And it's something that we will be pushing for and already have been pushing for, both at the state and federal level. This 272 acres that was purchased by the Alabama Port Authority will construct an inland container intermodal transfer facility. Again, just a fancy way of saying it's an inland port, which puts it right off of that rail line that you see right there in red to the left of the star. And when you consider where we are centered geographically in the state and where we are in the southeast region, again, it really improves our prospects for some of the other ideas and initiatives that the chamber is working on and some of the things that I've expressed to them really over about the last two and a half years. And when we think of, you know, these type of projects, we don't always understand the immediate impact. But trust me, every mayor would love to be announcing this to their city council at their next meeting. There's not a mayor that in this state, or any mayor that I've worked with, that would not appreciate the value of an inland port and what this means for transportation and logistics and the type of companies that we can go after and the type of jobs that we can go after by letting them know that they have a direct line to the port of Mobile, which will then be deepened and widened to expand more freight traffic. We believe this is key to the state maintaining an advantage over the port of Savannah, Georgia. And we wanted to make sure that we got this done prior to there being an inland port constructed somewhere in West Georgia that we thought would be a threat to us. And so this was a heated competition. It is one of those things where you've got to have the partnerships with the city, the county, the state and everybody on board. And I thank all of you for your help and your support in doing that. And I certainly thank all of our partners, as well as CSX and the Alabama State Port Authority, for seeing our vision and really working with us along with Chairman Elton Dean and Montgomery County Commission especially. So I just want to conclude this portion by saying there are more announcements, I think, to come. I think this puts us in a great position to have some more good news to share in the next few months. And most importantly, I think that we can go back to our community and we can talk about the prospect of getting our workforce ready. It's not just for young people, it's for people who are looking maybe to shift careers, who feel like they may have hit a ceiling in where they are and they want to get into this space of the type of jobs that we will have at these type of facilities. These are good-paying jobs, very good benefits, and we keep moving the way we're moving. We'll have some more announcements to bring before you. So I won't count those tickets before they hatch, but I feel good about them and this only makes me feel a lot more confident that we'll be able to bring those to you. So thanks so much again to everybody who was a big part of that. And I look forward to the ripple effect that it'll have on West Montgomery and to this entire region, the Black Belt itself.
Right.
Now, I'll switch to the downtown plan. Certainly wanted to announce that we're partnering with our Chamber of Commerce on this initiative. And this is an opportunity to help shape the strategic projects, policies and programs that will continue the success of downtown. That success is integral to the sustained growth that we're seeing, particularly in the tourism industry. And we hope that many of you and some of our residents and neighbors can join us for a series of open houses on February 8th and February the 10th. To learn more about the downtown action plan and stay up to date, please do so by visiting envision2040.org. And so you see there on the 8th, there's kind of a midday open house at the lab on Dexter from 11:00 to 2:00. And then there's one after work at the sanctuary on 432 Goldway Street from 5:00 to 8:00. This is in partnership with what we see again as the opportunity that we discussed among many different entities in this city is how to be prepared for tourism growth in our city, the tourism that is coming, that is drawing so many people to Montgomery, that is feeding our lodging taxes and some of those things that I would normally have started off this presentation with. That's a lifeblood that we want to continue to feed and we want to prepare a downtown that really is a seven-day-a-week downtown for both tourists and residents alike, so that we can host concerts, so that we can have events and festivals and so that we can have an increased quality of life initiatives for residents and those that are coming from our town. And we believe that your feedback is integral into making this happen. I also want to highlight while we're talking about the downtown plan, our recent residential housing study that was done. We formed this study in conjunction with the plan to assess housing needs and work to create a healthier, more vibrant core of the community. This study area includes a central business district, the warehouse district, Old Alabama Town, Columbus Square, the phased redevelopment of the Trenton Court Public Housing property, which was shuttered in 2011, the Capitol District, a section of Centennial Hill Neighborhood and several historic districts, including Cottage Hill. This study is a roadmap for smarter and sustainable growth for our city and it is very vital again to those that want to see a downtown grocery store, to those that want to see more activity in downtown. And really, it really dovetails on some feedback that we get from those that work for the state and work for other entities that travel in when we ask them for feedback about what's missing from downtown and what would keep them to spend more money here in our city. And this is what we're trying to do, is to make it more attractive. And one of the things that comes up is we need more residential space downtown as well. So we'll be updating you on that in the weeks and months to come. And if we can go to the next slide, we again want to highlight for the public and remind those that are on the council, been a big part of this is we are working on this improvement corridor action plan for the Southern Boulevard corridor. This is an assessment of corridor conditions, engaging community stakeholders and developing those recommendations for revitalizing this corridor and preparing an action plan for how this can improve over time to deal with vacancy, to deal with blight and to deal with the lack of investment and turn this important gateway along the I-65 corridor into something that those in West and South Montgomery can be proud of. If I can take a quick moment, I will let you know that at the US Conference of Mayors, where I was two weeks ago, the one and one aid to those that are in the private equity space, those that operate REITs and those that are in the private sector investment world and even those that represent other foreign governments and their investments was our downtown and was West Montgomery. Those were the two things that I discussed with them the most, because those are where I know there's a want and those are another place where I know there's a need. And when we look at what we have at I-65 corridor, West South Boulevard and certainly of Southern Boulevard and certainly Fairview Avenue, we know that there's a lot of potential and we know that there's a lot that we can do there. And I'm proud to say that our planning department, both in terms of community development with affordable housing, has been actively working there and we have been shaking the trees on the private investment side as well. And there was positive feedback, both from an urban planner with Drexler University, who is used to creating roadmaps for corridors like this from Erie, Pennsylvania to parts of Michigan, all the way to Georgia. And they're interested in taking a look at a further study to see exactly what makes sense for this area and what would make sense for the city and local government potentially to do to partner with those investors to draw impact investment in this corridor. And so when we think about this, I think we have the capacity to really change this trajectory sooner than we think with both the federal and private dollars that are out there, as well as the overall interest that we have in the city of Montgomery and our vision and having a ready-made plan that people can look at through the Envision 2040 plan and now through this micro-target campaign that we've been working with the Chamber of Commerce. So I want to thank all of you for your questions and your concerns about that as well. Montgomery Forward, just really want to touch on that. I know that the concerns around the community centers continue to come up. And we want to just remind those that the Montgomery Forward campaign, although not formally launched, has already been initiated. We have put on a remodel, the Tracy Larkin Community Center. We are working on Newtown to build out the Head Start classrooms there. And currently, we're working on the roof at Loveless. And we know that Loveless not only needs new roof, but we know that there needs to be some upkeep to those grounds that we plan to initiate. And within that, we want to make sure that, you know, about upcoming projects and one of those being ED Nixon upgrades at that community center that we'll be making as well. And so all of this will be branded with this logo. So when you see it or those, your neighborhood presidents see this, they will know where the money's coming from, which is the new allocation of dollars that we got from the bond refund last year. This is not ARPA dollars, this is what we previously agreed to invest in our communities. And they will also know that you all had a hand in this and we are building out the plans to invest in this city in a way like we described. So this is going to kind of be the back signal, if you will, for those projects as people can continue to ask you, as they do me, what are we doing about community centers and how do we plan to move forward there? So just wanted to bring that back to bear for those that in the public as we begin this new year. Now, I want to just give you a brief update on the chief of police search. Actually interviewed one of the final candidates today. We're down to our last four candidates and we feel very good about all the candidates that we have interviewed. I've learned a lot more than I thought I knew about some of the challenges that are facing various communities and some of the potential solutions that we can implement here in our city. I feel very good about the search that we did, the thoroughness of it, the breadth of the search, as well as all those leaders who applied that are, you know, really putting their necks out there every day in law enforcement across this city, across this state and this country, who apply for this position. It's been a very well sought-after position, but I think that the four that we have right now are all capable of leading this department. And what I hope that we will do is be able to come back to you within the next, by the next council meeting, having made a hire and having named a permanent chief. And that's where we hope to bring back to the public. And I believe that person will not only be able to inherit the support of the mayor's office, but I hope also that of the public and some of them who've been involved in this process, as well as the council, and then they'll be able to articulate their vision for how we move forward. And so just kind of wanted to give you an update on that. And at this time, I want to cede this podium to the Office of Violence Prevention to come and discuss Director Keith Moore to discuss some of those community roundtables.
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Real quick before he speaks, can I ask you a quick question? On that I-65 corridor, will any of the relief money be able to be used on that 65 corridor as far as teardowns and all that stuff?
Yes, that, you asked me to get ahead of talking to y'all as a group, but that would be one of my suggestions, that we do allocate some of those dollars for land acquisition and blight removal. Yes, sir.
Yes.
I got a, I got a couple of questions too, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if you want to wait until crime prevention come up and talk, or if I can ask you now, I don't know however you want to.
Let me get him up and then I'll circle right back and then our long ones be done.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. The Office of Violence Prevention has been building out our community face and helping the community to understand our purpose and the plan that the council and the mayor has for and our function in the city. We hosted a Neighborhood Watch Association. I think you all should have received a copy of that, that Zoom record. We hosted that last week, had a great turnout, had a great opportunity to speak to some of the citizens of Montgomery and hear their concerns and to introduce them to the Office of Violence Prevention. And we've received great feedback thus far. Our next initiative that we're working on is Community Roundtable. So we're going to start to move to the different community centers to do the same type of format, to discuss with the community, the citizens, those who in those local communities, the issues that they may be experiencing, to gain their buy-in and helping us resolve the gun violence issue and all forms of violence. And so as you can see on the screen, we're going to be at McIntyre Community on the 10th when we're moving throughout February through the four centers that we have located, McIntyre, Chisholm, Sheridan Heights and Ridgeway Park. So our goal is to continue to build that group violence approach, continue to get buy-in from the citizenry and to activate everyone to becoming part of the solution. So we're working on those initiatives, several other things that we've got on the forefront. We've been working with faith-based leaders. We're also looking and talking with our school officials at this point. So we're going to start to do those initiatives across every institution really that affects the lives of our citizens here in Montgomery. So we just want you to know that we're on the ground and we're putting in the work to make sure that we start working in a strong effort to resolve our violence in our city.
Thank you, Keith. We missed you at work session, but since we have you.
Yes.
The question of the hour was, I love the ideas of the roundtables and the discussions, but the numbers are already present. We already know that the numbers are high, we know what each community already has present.
Sure.
And so being that you're outreaching to the same people that's going to, the same people that came to the Zoom are going to be the same people that's at this roundtable. How are you and what is your plan and vision to implement some work? Because right now, we're getting hit really hard with crime. The faith-based community is amazing, but who's going to be out there in the streets talking to the people that are committing the crimes?
Well, we've been on the streets ourselves, and I mentioned that part of the initiative, but we've been in the community. I've been to local barber shops, I've been on the streets myself. Ms. Tyus has been connected to people in the community. So we're actually in the community already. They aren't necessarily standardized initiatives, but we're out there and we're talking to our citizenry. Even after every incident, I've talked to people in my community and other local communities. So we're on the street and we're going to get those things done. But we have to understand in our process that this is really kind of a long-term process. The immediate need, since we're really not a law enforcement agency, the immediate need, we won't be able to do, you know, and just say we're going to curb crime immediately. These are, these are going to be short-term, intermediate and long-term solutions that we have to build systematically. So I don't know if the office could, if I'm necessarily answering your question, but we're on the street and we're out there already talking to the community.
What are the solutions? That is my question. What are some of the things that you're about to implement? I understand everything you just stated. I think we all do across the board. What are some of the solutions that you are about to implement in 90 days? And 90, give me a plan for 90 days. days? In ninety, give me a plan for ninety days. What's about to happen with Officer Violence Prevention? What are you about to do in ninety days?
Hold on, Mr. Mayor. Let me take that question. Let me say this about the Office of Violence Prevention. The Office of Violence Prevention is not, is not a miracle worker program. So when we came to this body, we got half the budget and half the manpower that we asked for. So what we're asking him to do in less than one month on the job is to change something that is systemic that is going on nationally. So what I've tasked him to do is to not come up with, don't tell me what you know you're going to do when this is a new department without getting feedback. First thing he has to do and both Ms. Tyus have to do as we try to get that third head in the department is let's listen first. Let's make sure we go out and we do our due diligence because we can have a blueprint, which we have from various cities, but let's see if those ideas or things that those people who've been on the ground in this community really fighting this battle for years themselves through their nonprofits, through their mentoring programs, and through things of that nature. Let's see if it matches up. So what I suggested was just listen first. Go out and let people know what you're doing. Go out and let them know what your charge is and let's get the feedback. Once we get the feedback, let's take a look at the data and let's see where it is. And then let's try to prioritize how we go about really impacting his community. But I think it's important for anybody that may ask you as a councilperson, anybody that has asked me, whether it be through social media, whether it be through a friend of a friend, or whether it be through a pastor or community leader that I know, the police team isn't going to solve this issue, the mayor's not going to solve this issue, the council's not going to solve this issue. This is a community issue. And this is something that we all have to be very clear and concise about what it's really going to take. When we think about trying to police somebody's psychology and the actions of shooting somebody, I didn't say kill them. The actions of pulling a gun on someone, whether they know them and they're in the same car with them, as was the case in the last week in broad daylight, or whether it's someone that, you know, things may have gone bad in an illicit transaction, that's something that from our standpoint, it's going to take a lot of work. It's going to take a lot of work. And one of the key takeaways, and I didn't plan to share this, but I will, on the Public Safety Committee with the US Conference of Mayors, there were several strong leaders there, both mayors of large cities, mid-sized cities, and then the leadership from the Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms Bureau. And one of the things that came up was about all the partnerships and programs that we have and some of the things that are working in some cities was a remark that came up from a three-term mayor of a major city. And he said, let me tell all you new mayors this. He said, you think you're going to wrestle your way out of this problem? He said, you won't. He said, you got to make sure that you end this for the long term and you're tackling everything from mental health to substance abuse to truancy to domestic violence and all these things that are leading indicators. He said, if you think your answer is more cops on the street or more of the things that us as mayors probably like to believe is the answer, he said, you're not going to get there. And this is someone who served in a large city for now over ten years. And I took that point, I wrote it down in my notes because I did come there kind of thinking, well, I want to hear what the police solutions are. I want to hear what the crime reduction solutions are. And his point, and it was echoed by several other mayors on that Public Safety Committee, was you all have to take a holistic approach to this. And if you're looking for short-term gains and what you're going to be able to get back in two months or three months and so forth, back to your community, so you can have a press conference, their words, not mine, then you're going to be mistaken and you're going to, you're going to have some missteps. And so that led me even to talk to our police chief candidates, our finalists, a little bit different because as much as I want to see those February numbers come down, as much as I wish the January numbers weren't what they are, what I have to kind of recognize myself is that new chief is not going to be a magician. I can't charge that chief and say, hey, chief, we got to see these numbers come down in thirty days. Now, I can ask, what's your day one strategy? And I've asked that. And then I can ask kind of what's your strategy to build that trust and transparency with the community? And then ultimately, how will, how will you be measured? Those are just some of the questions that I asked. But I say that in reference to the Office of Violence Prevention because I didn't want them to get out and overpromise on things that a new program project like this may be tempted to do when the community is not familiar with it. And what we want to make sure we do first is to not go out there with all the answers, but to make sure that we're hearing from those who've been doing this and continue to do it. And we'll do it whether this office goes away or this mayor's administration goes away. They're going to continue to do it because they love the community and it's what they believe in. But let's go out and listen and let's see if some of the data, let's see if some of the science and some of the evidence-based theory that we have matches that. And then let's come back and let's talk about kind of how we move forward after you kind of get that feedback. And I, I think I would feel much better, one, about sharing that with you and all the members of the council, once we have gotten that feedback about kind of how we move forward with that to try to interrupt this cycle of violence that is taking far too many lives and certainly is impacting far, far more than it should.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Let me, let me ask, and I sort of agree with Marche on the ninety-day deal. Listen, I was not, as you know, a big, big proponent of the violence prevention program. You know, and, and Marche in asking in the ninety days, you know, I heard everything you said, but the public wants answers and needs help now. We have a massive problem and this city can't continue to wait for six months or nine months or twelve months. We've got to have actions that are taken today to help solve some of this stuff.
All right, Glenn, let me say this. Not share this publicly. As far as I know, I'm the only mayor who's ever been held up at gunpoint. Far as I know. So, so nobody needs to tell me what it feels like to have a gun pointed in your face and wonder whether or not that's going to be the last time you take a breath.
No, I also agree.
So let me say this. Hold on a minute. So let me, let me say this. So I, I don't need to be reminded about that because I live with that every day. So I know that feeling. So for those who have dealt with that because a loved one has been shot themselves, they've been held up, they've been robbed, or worse, they've lost one, I get that. I was responsible for a seventeen-year-old kid who was just working with me to make a little extra money. So I understand what comes along with that. What I also understand is when you're in this position, we can't look for the short-term fix. Now, the short-term fix leads to lawsuits. The short-term fix leads to trigger-happy cops. The short-term fix leads to mistakes that compound where we are right now. So what we're asking all of our folks who are on the front side of this is let's be prudent about this. Let's think this through and let's make sure that we are listening to the public. The public wants answers. The answers are quite simply this. We're doing everything that we can to change the trend that not only is impacting us here in Montgomery, but it's impacting other communities. Those are weekly conversations, meetings that I have with Chief Harris. Those are daily conversations that she has with Chip Hill and semi-daily conversations that he and I have based on their conversations. So that's kind of how the discussion goes. So whether or not that's traffic enforcement, or whether or not those are partnerships with our federal agencies, or whether or not that is working with, you know, our other partners in law enforcement, judicial system, about people who we're getting arrested being right back out there. All of those are part of it. And so, you know, for the public, I get it. Everybody is frustrated. I hear the gunshots tonight too. I don't, I don't live way out in the city. I hear them. So, and I hear them. They sound real close. And I call and I encourage the public to call 911. So one of the things that we're trying to do is to make sure that the feeling that I have that nobody else has to feel like that. Because that, that ain't nothing fun about it. Ain't nothing you're ever going to forget. So we also have to be responsible in our position about not putting our law enforcement officers in any type of danger. And we also have to make sure that we're giving them the clear directive about how to move forward with this. And that is to say that we want you to be diligent. We want you to be professional. We want you to make sure that you serve and protect this community. We don't want you breaking the law. We don't want you doing anything. We don't need you trying to be a hero. And we don't need you profiling anybody. We need you to make sure that you're doing the things within the directives you've been given by Chief Harris and the command staff about how we attack this and understanding that all of our partnerships are going to be part of it. Listen, I'd love to give you a ninety-minute solution to it. But the fact is, we have to make sure that we're going about this in the right way, lest we end up where we were prior to this phase where there were lawsuits, there were a lot of other things coming back on, not just this city, but a lot of cities and a lot of police departments as well. And we certainly want to, you know, conclude by saying that, you know, the mental health and the physical health of our officers is also something that's very important to us. And so we want to make sure that we're keeping them at the forefront because they're doing the best they can in a really trying circumstance. And we understand that. So this is a multi-pronged approach that we're taking to this. And again, it, it, it's personal for me. And so if it comes across that way, it's because it is. So, but even with it being personal, I still have to take the professional approach as the mayor of the city in terms of what we know the chief can do and what we know our law enforcement officers can do. And to the degree that there are some other solutions to this, those are the reasons why we're looking and asking those questions, both from the Office of Violence Prevention, from the community, what's their feedback from the ground level, to those who are out there in the streets every day, working with after-school programs, working with some of these at-risk young men and young women who are out there, as well as working with those who are at the forefront of what they see on the other side of the criminal justice system about ways that they can really help us out in that as well. And I think that's going to lead me, Charlie, to something you wanted me to ask Chip to brief the council on. Then I'll come back to Council Graham's question. I'll leave the other piece for the next meeting since we've gone over. Chip, you don't mind kind of coming to brief?
Well, and before Chip do that, Mayor, let me ask this question. I know I'm, I'm, you know, I get the calls everybody else gets. But, and I know you said we need a listening feedback timeframe. Can we say ninety days, about sixty days with that, the feedback time will be over? How long are we going to be doing that before we can come back to the table and say, we, we have some ideas? I mean, and I get what you're saying. You don't know. We don't know. It might not be a one solution. It may not be a one simple thing. It's not a switch we can hit and just turn it off. We get that. And we appreciate that you're trying to do a thorough job with that. We appreciate that very much so because at the end of the day, it's lives, it's state. So we appreciate that you're being very cautious in whatever approach that you take. But if we could get just a timeframe to say, at least give us sixty days, give us ninety days to have a communication with, you know, a conversation with the community and come together with some strategies and then come back. Can we say something like that, sixty, ninety days?
Yeah, let me, let me touch on two things. I think this is key because y'all have already done it. One thing is to remind the public is that you've already authorized 1.5 million dollars for us to put into license plate readers and ShotSpotter technology from the allocation of bond dollars. So that's already in progress, a process, no, it's in progress. It's in the process of being delivered here. And Chief Harris is doing that. So some of the license plate readers, some of the ShotSpotters, you all already allocated that. That's coming. It was backlog like everything else was because of technology and chips and the supply chain and so forth. We're in line like all the other cities are, which is another thing I learned in talking with some of my peers. So y'all have already allocated dollars, you know, to that. We're going to have additional dollars going toward that, I think, based on some of y'all's feedback as it relates to some of the ARPA funds as well. And not all of that is to technology. So for those who want us to be preventative, they want us to support their front-end solutions, there are dollars that you all have suggested that we allocate for that. And I know we all have to agree on this, so it's not final, but I certainly agree with y'all's priorities on putting things on the front end where that's concerned. I certainly think that within the next sixty to ninety days, we will complete this listening tour and we'll be able to kind of come back and then share what we've heard from the community, from those who are on the ground versus what we believe. And again, you know, I think that we've got some things that already we believe will be helpful and will be impactful. We just want to make sure that we're not bringing in, if you want to say, a boilerplate solution that may fit another community and expecting it to work now without getting sense from those that are on the ground every day giving us their feedback. And if I'm wrong, you can tell me if I'm... But I think that timeframe, I certainly think within the next sixty to ninety days, we will have that and we'll have some of the data if you need to share that with those folks. But let them know now. I mean, this is important. You all have already, I mean, you've allocated dollars and we have ordered those things on both, on both ends. So I know everybody wants it today. We all, trust me, we all do. But this thing is, is, is very, it's very, very different. You were seeing spikes and cities are seeing spikes across the board they haven't seen in fifteen years. And you name me a city and they saw a higher spike in the last two years than they had the previous five to ten. And that, that's regardless of demographic, that's regardless, but certainly those that are similar size and scope to the city of Montgomery. And so I think that we're in a good place with Director Moore and his team. I think the feedback from the community has been good. I hear the urgency from those that are in the public. And I think that is also what makes me feel very confident about those that we have interviewed for the Chief of Police. And they're educating us on exactly what one of my mayoral peers said, that, you know, you don't have enough cops, you don't have enough handcuffs to get yourself out of this alone. And that's part of it. But you also have to have some help in some other spaces to really address this too. So with that said, Chip, if you'll come up and I want you to, President Jim Wright wanted you to bring some remarks that you shared with the chamber about some of those other indirect pieces that are tied in there.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yeah, man.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Charlie and I spoke, President Jim Wright and I spoke the other day. And Charlie, I thought you were kidding when you said you wanted me to talk to the council about it.
I'm not kidding. It's a very serious, very serious situation.
Well, the facts are important. And, and what I'm going to do is I want to, I want to tell it to you, I want to share these facts with you the same way we did with the chamber. And the reason we did it with the chamber, same reason, I guess, we're doing it here tonight, is because one of the biggest dangers that we have in a situation like this is the same problem and the same danger that we faced during this epidemic. And that is we get off to a premature start and we all start thinking that we know exactly what's going on and what needs to be done. And that comes out of frustration. And that's exactly what happened with the pandemic. So we had to take it one day at a time. We had to evaluate what was going on. We had to get the best information. And we had to adjust what we were doing to see if it worked, change course. That's exactly what we're having to do during this uptick of crime. Now, am I smart enough to come up with that on my own? Absolutely not. That's what other cities are doing. Because forty percent, and this is what I'm sharing with the chamber, is I wanted them to understand also exactly where we were because criticism, well-founded criticism is not, is not a problem. The problem that we have run, run into time and time again, we got a lot of folks that are really mad about stuff that really isn't true. So I thought it'd be real important that we just operate on a, on a basis of facts.
Speak the truth.
And I'm sorry.
Say, speak the truth.
Oh, okay. That's all I know how to do in this program. It's going to cost me my job one day, I'm sure.
We got your back, Chip.
But what we wanted people to understand is this, is that number one, it's not only here. And, and a lot of what I'm going to say, you're, and I'm going to give you the short version. They asked me to talk for five minutes at the chamber and I think I went twenty. So we won't do that today.
We want you to talk for three.
I'm just excited. It's the first time ever the mayor's given me the microphone. So about forty, the top forty cities in this country have experienced a rise in violent crime of thirty percent or more. Now, just like I told the other group, now at that point, our, our human nature makes us want to just dismiss that. Yeah, but I'm talking about here. But it's not just here. And if we keep trying to put a square peg in a round hole and act like we're different than every other city in this country, then we're going to continue to be frustrated. Because what's going on here is technology. Okay? The world has gotten smaller because of technology. And used to, folks that dressed a certain way in Uofa, Alabama, and they dressed a certain way in Birmingham, and they dressed a certain way in New York. And now you got the kids in Uofa wearing the exact same thing they're wearing in New York City. That's what technology's done. They're eating the same food. They're wearing the same clothes. And unfortunately, the criminal element, same things going on. Used to, we heard about crips and bloods, that was only in Los Angeles. But now we're seeing them in southern cities. So the world's getting smaller and we're going to frustrate ourselves if we think that's not going to have an impact on us. Do you know it took seven days for some people in this country to hear that President Lincoln had been assassinated? Seven days. And this, two weekends ago, before my daughter went back to college, she sat in a lazy boy chair and had a text conversation with her best friend who was in Germany. The world has changed and it's crazy for us to think that it hasn't. This isn't the Montgomery of thirty years ago. It's not the Montgomery of twenty years ago. We do have a criminal element here. And because of various set of circumstances, we have a rise in activity that's going on around the country. And we're going to find a way to deal with it. But what I wanted everyone to understand is this, if we're going to attack it, let's do it from a basis of fact. Darrell Bailey, our DA, has taken a lead on helping us Darryl Bailey, our DA, has taken a lead on helping us uh, correct a problem that a lot of people didn't even know what was going on. First of all, you may or may not know that we have a backlog in our court system here of three hundred cases. There are three hundred violent crime cases backlog that still have to go to trial. So you commit a violent crime today, you're number three oh one. So during that period of time, if that individual's out on bond, anything could happen. And it's crazy for us to think that's not going to have an impact on this community. And that's because of COVID, any other number of things you want to point to. But anyway, the fact is, we have a backlog of three hundred cases. All right? So we're trying to deal with that. Darryl said they used to do two trials a week, they go to three trials a week. Well, they go to three trials a week, it's still a hundred weeks. So this is a boulder that we're going to have to push up this mountain. Okay? It, it, it won't be quick. The other, the other thing that we all need to understand is that on this bond issue, and it's being corrected. You're seeing that get corrected in front of your eyes. But, but we had some craziness going on there. We had folks going in and out so quick that people weren't talking to the police. Because if I tell on you, you might be back out in twelve hours and then, and then we have an issue. So that affects it. It's a ripple effect that we have going on. But that's being changed. And now we're, you're starting to see some bonds that are, that are being increased. Can't tell you the number of people that call the office and wants the mayor to increase the bond. So, you know, if y'all would like to pass an ordinance giving him that power, we'll take it. But the mayor don't control bond. Those are our judges. Those are our courts. So what I told the folks at the Chamber of Commerce is this simply. We don't mind taking the calls and we don't mind taking the criticism. But if you're going to call us, then you need to call the source. Because the source of this is guns. And we dance around it all we want to. And I had a lady confront me and she said, you're just trying to take away everybody's guns. I said, ma'am, I'm a licensed gunner. I don't, I don't want your gun. I've got my own. And my wife has hers. But the problem that we continue to run into in this community over and over and over again is because we get them off the street and then they, they get another batch and they're back out on the street. And it's easy to get them. We, it, it's hard for our, for our officers to take them because of the laws that are out there. And I'm just going to say this, and I, I know there was a, a rally today and I know Chief Harris wants to speak to that. But I wanted to make sure the folks in the business community, and I want to make sure you know that there are two bills right now up on the Hill. And both of them will make it easier for the bad guys to get guns and it's going to make it harder for the good guys to take them away. Okay? And if we don't do something about that, then the chickens are going to come home to roost. Is that true or not?
True.
So I would like to see us go forward on this issue, on this crime issue as we progress, to vow that we're going to be honest with each other and operate from a basis of fact. Are we willing to make change to address this? Absolutely. We dismissed the Public Safety Director, we dismissed the Police Chief. We're about to hire another Police Chief and if, and as I've told each and every one of you, and if they don't get the job done, this mayor will dismiss them too. Because there's too many good things going on in this community. We are not going to give this community over to the criminal element and that is an absolute promise. And we work on it every day, every single day. And some of y'all know me better than others do. And you know how hard we're working on this issue. And where our hearts are on this issue. Because this is an issue, it's tearing families apart. I want to tell you what the mayor said the other day. I won't forget it. He said, I understand people talk about leaving Montgomery. He said, but I'm concerned about the lady that can't afford to leave. There's, there are people trapped in their homes. They're scared to come outside because there's bullets flying. But I want to promise you this, okay? From my position and whatever it is, I can assure you. We're coming to these guns. We're coming to these guns. And I had a lady tell me, she said, it's just the guns now. She said, it's not the guns, it's the people. Because, because it's the criminals out there and they're going to find a way to do what they do, even if they don't have a gun. I said, ma'am, are you telling me you think we would have had seventy-seven stabbing murderers last year?
No.
Now, that's common sense. We all know that. The vast majority of the problems that we face in this community is gun-related. You got too many jackasses with guns out there and we're coming to get them. Now, Chief Harris wants to speak to you.
I want to say, uh, the Montgomery Police Department appreciates the support from our city government, city council, mayor's office. And I had the opportunity to go um, speak on behalf of law enforcement with the sheriff, um, Derek Cunningham, with representatives from sixty-seven counties of the state of Alabama, law enforcement chiefs and, and also sheriffs throughout the state, along with the District Attorney's Association. And we were speaking on guns and how guns are affecting how we are able to go out there and do our job and how it is creating a problem with the crime trends that we're seeing throughout the city. So I wanted to be clear on my message with, with the group and what I was clear on is the facts. And Mr. Hill just spoke on the facts, the facts of Montgomery. I'm going to repeat what I read to them so that every here, everyone here in the city of Montgomery know those facts that we shared. The facts are, in 2021, the Montgomery Police Department investigated a record-breaking seventy-seven homicides. Out of those seventy-seven homicides, sixty-nine were committed with a firearm. In 2021, the Montgomery Police Department investigated approximately three hundred and thirty assault with firearm cases. In 2021, the Montgomery Police Department impounded approximately seventeen hundred firearms with approximately two hundred reported stolen firearms. In 2021, the Montgomery Police Department secured approximately one hundred and sixty warrants for violation of license to carry concealed pistol permit. In 2021, the Montgomery Police Department secured approximately forty-five warrants for certain persons forbidden to possess a firearm. In the current year of 2022, the Montgomery Police Department has already conducted eight homicide investigations, all of which involve firearms. In 2022, a citizen in Montgomery was killed with a firearm while ministering the gospel. In 2022, seven people were shot in a bowling alley in Montgomery with one suffering fatal injuries. In the latest Uniform Crime Report, the FBI cited that the number of homicides in 2020 increased almost thirty percent from 2019 and about seventy-seven percent of reported murders in 2020 were committed with a firearm. Based upon the facts, it is clear that access to firearms is a public safety concern when they fall into the hand of dangerous offenders. The ability for law enforcement professionals to identify and remove such threats from within our community is a valid function of our police department. I think it's important to know those numbers, to know those facts, because that's our hometown city. This is Montgomery, Alabama. We see the trend across the nation, but this is what we're faced with. That's the reality of where we are. So when we talk about firearms, we talk about limitations, we talk about the delay of the court system. These are some of the issues that law enforcement, not just here locally, but across the state of Alabama are faced with. As I stated earlier, we had sixty-seven counties, um, representatives from sixty-seven counties in attendance to say that this is our voice, we need to be heard. We need the help of the judicial system as well. We need that support uh, from the community with understanding to look at the dilemmas that we face. But also from a, from a local standpoint, what are we doing to correct the problem? We understand and we hear the voices, we hear the cries, we hear the concerns. Our approach is to look at tactically strategic ways that we can encounter these problems. Like the mayor said, we want, we don't want to go out there and violate civil rights, civil liberties while we're enforcing the law, but we want to remedy the problem. We want to put the solution out there, the best solution for it, but it's going to take a selective, a collective effort to do that. One of the things that the police department are doing in our 2022 initiatives that I pushed out for our department is we're going to focus a lot on training. We want tactically proficient, professional police officers out there doing the job. We want to address that issue, but we want to give them all the tools that they need. We understand that there's a, a retention and recruitment issue across, with law enforcement across the nation. So we want to fully equip our officers, whether we have the numbers that we need or the numbers that we want or the numbers that we have. We want to have the training, education, experience to go out there and deal with these issues. We're looking at outreach. We're reaching out to the courage of the base community. We're working with them also to see how can we, how can we go out there to remedy some societal ills that we face? Not just the offender. How can we clean up the problem? What is the ultimate solution to fix the mentality, the psychology of what we're dealing with, the problem that we're faced with? So there are approaches. Unfortunately, it does take a little bit longer than overnight to come with the solution. But we're working diligently on it every day, just as Mr. Hill stated, just as the mayor stated. This is something that's a collective effort from everybody. And like Pastor Rembrandt once stated from Flatline Church, this is us. Montgomery is us, whether we want to accept it or not, whether we want to pack up and leave. Where we are right now, this is us, this is our city, this is everybody's problem. Law enforcement is a tool, city government is a tool, but in order to resolve it, we all have to work together with understanding that it's going to take some time. But we're going to continue to work on it. We're going to continue to focus our efforts on getting it resolved because we all want a better Montgomery. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on it.
Chief, what percentage of the people that had a gun in a violent crime are still on the street?
I'm sorry?
What percentage of the people that fired a, a gun are still on the street?
Okay. And going back to the numbers that uh, Mr. Hill got from uh, District Attorney is twenty-five percent. When we look at that rate of recidivism, twenty-five percent of those that are reoffended.
Very good. Thank you for the information. Appreciate you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
And I'm just going to make this comment based on what Mr. Hill and what Chief is saying. We just got to make it plain. We got to put the pressure on our judicial system to start hearing these cases. We can't keep allowing people to just continue to commit crimes and run the streets. We can point fingers and blame that the city council, the mayor's office. But if you're not getting to court to get your cases heard and you're still running the street, then it's a prosecution problem. So we got to put the blame where the blame lies. And our courts need to open up and start hearing these cases. And that's my comment. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Berry, you got some, you got...
I see my time. We've gone long. I know Ms. Graham.
I do, I do.
I talked to you one-on-one on it, but if you want to talk about an open record, that's fine too. I just don't want to keep the...
Okay, I got it, I got it. Okay, so, uh, Mayor, there's a couple of things that you mentioned I just kind of had, I wanted to clear for myself so that when I get questions, I can answer them properly. You talked about a grocery store downtown, um, and housing, growing housing downtown. Uh, West Montgomery is a food desert. And we have rooftops over there. Now, whether we have as many rooftops in West Montgomery as we have in East Montgomery, okay, I can get that. But we have enough rooftops to support any grocery store, any grocery store. It doesn't matter. We have enough there. The Piggly Wiggly we had on Fairview closed down. We need a grocery store over in West Montgomery. That is a food desert. I get it, downtown need a grocery store, we need to grow it, but please, don't let West Montgomery be something we think about after the fact. That side of town really means that, so I had to bring it up.
I'm real quick, I mean, I'm smiling because I'm excited about it. We just signed on with United Cities. Uh, you can look them up. Uh, they deal in uh, urban transformation. And the number one issue I told them was food insecurity in West Montgomery. Uh, they have a certain uh, Hall of Famer that, that goes by one name, who's a, a very prominent backer of this organization. And they do things from Southern California to Nevada to uh, the mid-Atlantic. Uh, Columbia, South Carolina, that was the most recent city. And I would just sign a memorandum of understanding with them uh, for them to help us on that initiative and several others uh, regarding that particular issue. Mobility was the second one. And the third one was making sure that fresh food is, if fresh food uh, is available as well. Which, again, you all have already allocated dollars out of the city budget for us to uh, renovate the farmer's market on Nashville, Nashville, on, um, I said Nashville Parkway, on Fairview Avenue. Um, and so we'll be held in that groundbreaking along with the groundbreaking for that fire station. Uh, I hope to do that this month. So let the community know that you all have already allocated those dollars for the farmer's market and this partnership with United Cities, I think is really going to pay big dividends. And I'd love to pull you in on that.
Okay, good, good. That sounds good. Last but not least, McIntyre. I know that's the, um, one of the places they're going to have, um, McIntyre had Mike, a young man by the name of Mike that ran that facility for years. He was taken from there and put in Regis Park. It is not manned. No ones there operating. We, the community that's right around there, um, Western Hills told me that they reached out to have a community meeting, which they were always able to do. And they've been told they've got to pay to have a meeting in that community center. I got problems with, we opening up, but we ain't opening up. My people struggling over there. And I didn't know we did that, that we charged the communities to have a meeting there, but we don't have any staff there any longer. We need staff at McIntyre. That was a center, people was there all the time. People loved it. They wrap around, it was a wraparound center for them. Uh, they don't have that anymore. And now they can't even use it to hold community meetings. We need some help over there at McIntyre.
Tell them, tell them that's by, tell them that's by executive order. They don't have to pay that. They can, they can have it. I didn't know that. You just brought it to my attention just now.
Okay, good. I'll make sure...
They don't have to pay. And, and I do agree uh, with you, not only with McIntyre, E.D. Nixon, Houston Hill, uh, all the communities in Regis Park, uh, many of them, one of the things that we have stressed, uh, when, again, we talked about what we were going to do with the upgrades, was just putting a new coat of paint on, it wasn't going to be enough. That we had to make sure that we were bringing in relevant programming, not only for young people, but for adults as well. So we talked with uh, Trenton, and we talked with other community stakeholders, the chamber as well, apprenticeship programs to bring in for adults. And one of the things that uh, I'm probably most excited about uh, is that I believe that there's a uh, a new uh, vision for our Parks and Recreation Department. There's a new uh, engine there to complete some of these things and to make sure that it's relevant. Because what I don't want us to do is to paint and to put new doors, new roofs, and then we don't have people in there utilizing, and then people that are looking for these central spaces. So I agree with you completely. And if you'll shoot me a text with that gentleman uh, who was put out, I'll find out what happened and where the disconnect was, and we'll jump on that before we leave here tonight.
Okay, sound good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry it took so long. And, and this is uh, Black History Month. I want to go through my slides, but just wanted to acknowledge that as well.
All right, you got, uh...
You got, uh...
Eddie Robinson here.
Oh, yes, sir. Sorry. Uh, Dr. Roberts, Coach Robinson? You can go find that. Yes, sir.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Eddie Robinson and I'm the thirtieth football coach of Alabama State University. And proud to be here in front of the city council and just wanted to bring you greetings. Um, I understand that, that we have some pressing issues in the city and as a transplant of New Orleans and also lived in Houston for a long time. Uh, definitely want to be sensitive to that topic and lend my support from the university and from my student athletes. But on behalf of Dr. Quentin T. Ross, who's our president at Alabama State University, Athletic Director, Jason Cable, I just wanted to share with you quickly our vision of what we're trying to do here at Alabama State. Uh, we come up, came up with a model that was a hashtag swarm as one. And when people asked me what that was, uh, I was just sitting around, me and my A.D. thinking about how can we impact the community and how we can get our student athletes to buy into what we're trying to sell. Uh, when you're trying to win football games, uh, you have to convince everybody that you're the leader. And if you're going to be a leader, you have to convince them to follow you. So the whole swarm as one mentality that we came up with was that for us to win is not just about a football coach. It's not just about um, a football player. It's about the whole community coming together and together pushing forward to our goal, which is ultimately to win the SWAC championship. And I'm judged by wins and losses. It's pretty easy to tell in a couple of years if I'm a good football coach or not. So it's, it's one of those things that's uh, it's real determined, which I like that. You know, I prefer to have that type of role than one like the weatherman. You know, say you're fifty percent right, uh, fifty percent wrong, chance of rain. You know, you bring an umbrella, you bring a sun visor, you never know. But for me, it's, it's a good determination of whether or not we're doing good or not. So, but what I realized is that for me to survive as a football coach and for my program to survive, for Alabama State to survive, it has to be a community effort. And that starts with the city of Montgomery. I mean, we're the Division One program, athletic program in the city. And we have some great programs, some great coaches. Uh, Coach Bean, our track coach, has won numerous championships. Coach Penny, our volleyball coach, has won championships. And so we want to bring a, a championship to the football team also. Uh, one thing, listening to everything that's going on in the city of Montgomery, so I'm so glad I was here tonight, is that I've been in some cities and growing up in New Orleans and realized that sports can bring people together. Sports can help you to swarm as one. Uh, one thing I realized, being a big fan of Drew Brees and the Saints, uh, and playing in a city like Houston, when the football team was winning, everybody was in a good mood. Everybody felt good after Drew Brees threw a touchdown. And on Monday morning, the crime wasn't as bad in New Orleans. And so I say that to say, us coming together uh, from Alabama State and everybody else in the community, swarming as one, uh, realizing that we're the Hornets. And so swarm as one means, you know, one Hornet can't do very much, you know? A couple Hornets, they may annoy you, maybe sting you on the back of the head. But if you get a swarm of Hornets, a whole community, then we can come together and we can do a lot of great things. And I don't just mean from Alabama State and the football team. I mean from us as the whole city of Montgomery. For Alabama State to be successful, Montgomery has to be successful. You know, once we start swarming as one, you know, we can take down, you know, a bulldog that's up in Huntsville. We can take down the Jaguar out in Baton Rouge. We can take down the Rattler down there in Florida A&amp;M. one at Alabama State. So, this is recruiting season for me. So, tomorrow I have a big signing day. So, I'm going to recruit you guys to come help us swarm as one. So, if I can... I was always told you never show up empty-handed when you're invited to something. So, I have some T-shirts here, and it says swarm as one and Alabama State. So, for all of the City Council, we have a swag bag. One thing I realized, recruiting these youngsters out here, they like gifts. Now, the NCAA says I can only give you guys so much in gifts for free, but this is what I can give you. So, I'm going to make sure we have a T-shirt, an Alabama State bag, some other gifts. But also for my mayor of Montgomery, I have an autographed helmet here. And so, I'm going to present this to you. This is the Alabama State helmet, and what I really want is to set up a football game. I know you went to Morehouse, and this being the first day of Black History Month, Dr. Martin Luther King, Carter G. Woodson, I think it'd just be a great idea if Alabama State could play Morehouse on the state, on the new ASU stadium campus. So, make sure you make that happen. We're extending that hand. And so...
But before I sit down, I just really want to say, coming here as an 18-year-old,
the first, I was a walk-on at Alabama State. The first time I ever came to Montgomery, my mom dropped me off and she left. And it was a big thing. I had never been here. I didn't come on to visit at all. And so, now it's like my best friends are here in Montgomery. So, people say, hey, you're leaving Houston to move back to Montgomery. It's almost like a second home for me. And so, coming back here, I want to be a part of the community. I want my football team to be part of the community. We want to do things in the community like a real men read, which is some of the things we did in Houston from a community service standpoint. I want my team to go out to the elementary schools as role models and read to the children and understand that, hey, you're a role model because you're a college athlete. And for a third grader, that's something that they can envision, like, hey, I can play college football at Alabama State. And also, volunteerism inside the community and around, whatever you need us to do, from the Alabama State football family and also from the President's Office, from the A.D.'s Office, if you need us to help clean up, help support causes, help to do different things in the community, we're going to be there. And all I ask for you to do is to swarm as one. Come to our stadium, come see us play. If you ever want to come to the game, let us know. We want you to come onto our campus because we're the Division One football program in the state, I mean, in the city, and we want to be here to support you and we want you to support us. So, thank you for your time, and we'll be back, and we appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Where my swag bag at?
Thank you.
Where my swag bag?
Coach Robinson, I'm going to hold you to that cleanup. We got a couple planned.
Absolutely. Actually, my team was actually cleaning up. I forgot where it was. Maybe you can help me out. But just two weeks ago, we did a community service event where we went out to help clean up. So, we got you. Just let us know. We have 110 kids willing to help.
Okay. And where my swag bag at?
Hey, Mayor. Hey, 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 Mayor. Can we get a home and home with Alabama State A&amp;M?
I talked, I talked, I talked about that already, Mr. President.
Economic impact.
There you go.
We write checks in Montgomery.
You want to move it?
Run day, make sure you get any pictures.
Thank you, Grant. Thank you. Good luck, Dave. Man, tell him to use a defensive bag. Tell him to use a defensive bag and not run on the seat.
Hey, you want to hit him hell with a classic?
All right, let's go, Mr. President. Time to get started on the regular thing. Let me pass out something right now. The standing committees, I want to put those back in force. We got four that way. We got four that way. Okay, here four. And then here's what we got going that way. So, whenever I go, we miss one. You got a copy?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. These are going for us as a, as a man?
I'm good, I'm good.
Okay. All right. So, you got that in? Standing committees are in, okay? All right, the first item on the agenda?
Mr. President, item one, application for a lounge retail liquor class one license to envision this exotic lounge at 21 Coliseum Boulevard.
Representative, go ahead, please. And Mr. Lyons, you got some information you want to talk, tell us about that. Y'all had, y'all had information with the group.
Yeah. I've received over 200, actually, I've got 236 signatures on a petition against it, and then another lady submitted 14, and these are all people that live in the neighborhood right around in there. This is the Morningview Neighborhood, Eastbrook Association area, Delrayda area, and I'm sure Ed and some people in his district have called him, but I've gotten several calls against it. And what it boils down to, guys, is we're just, you know, we're at our eyeballs with bars in the neighborhoods and staying up until 2:00 in the morning. Sometimes the vision is, you know, has a good idea and you hope it floats, but at the end of the day, we have issues with some of the patrons that leave these places at 2:00 in the morning, drunk out of their mind, shooting guns in the air. I'm having an issue right now with one that we allowed to open at the, at the end of Delrayda, in the Johnstown area, and we're having to look into that. And I've got to get a follow-up from Chief Rees on that. But at the end of the day, I've got to go with the people that live around there want or don't want, and I have to be a no vote on it.
Okay. Well, we've had public hearing on this. We've had several hearings on it, and we've had neighborhood meetings, so I think it's time for a vote.
Mr. President, I have a question, and it just, just to Mr. Lyons. And I understand the 214, 250 signatures, and I always have been supportive of, you know, community, and you represent that district in that area, but I know you said something about 2:00 opening. If the owner is willing, you know, I know, I'm looking at the report, I mean, the documents on it, based on MPD, there have been no disturbs because it hasn't been opened from my understanding. And the recommendation, it does not have a concern with the recommendation of this application. I understand that Ziegler has come down to this council numerous times. We carried it over for 30 days, so community meetings. I don't know what the community meets with that. I think that was supposed, he was supposed to facilitate that, get that back to the council on what happened in those meetings. That information never came before this council. I understand. I want to support the community, but I also, I'm pro-business. I want to support people within the community that's trying to do the right thing. We asked this, this young lady in this application to do everything she have done, everything we asked them to do. And to come back, I know we said 2:00. If she's willing to adjust her hours, and I know we want to be fair around the board, but she hadn't opened, we haven't had any issues at her location. So, if she's willing to adjust her business hours plan from operating, I don't know what time he was planning on opening, to midnight, would you be willing to consider to give her an opportunity on a 30, 60, 90-day review?
You know, at the end of the day, like I said, I've got 236 signatures that just don't want it. They don't want it.
All right. Whoever's talking needs to leave. Whoever, whoever's talking needs to leave right now. Police officer, whoever's talking, get them out of here. I'm going to have that.
And also, there has been, you know, I got an email from one lady this morning that there have been issues at that Zip Lounge before, and one of the, well, two of the instances that she put in her letter to me was a child found drunk in the backyard, passed out with his wallet and keys, you know, strung all over the place. And another occasion, drunk was down in the ditch, found by a woman and her son. So, we can't, we can't pretend that Zip Lounge has never had an issue, or this establishment's never had an issue, and that it won't have an issue.
And I can agree with you, Mr. Lyons, but my point, this owner did not own the facility at that time. That was a different ownership. That was a different management. This is a new application that's coming before the City Council. She don't have a track record at that location. I can understand the prior owners. We have closed, we did close it down when it was Johnny Zips or something to that. And we did close it based on problems, but I think we're getting ahead of the game when we're not giving people who wants to do business in Montgomery an opportunity to do business because it's something that happened in the past. We all have pasts. So, when we look forward, I mean, I'm just asking, you, you the council for that district, if you be willing, if she willing to close her business or establishment at midnight, that mean we get them off the road before 12, before 2:00, and we do a 30, 60-day review? And if she's not operating within her license, we shut it down?
I thought, I thought there was a note in these minutes that I received from somebody that that was discussed, and that was not a...
Well, let's ask the lady right here, okay? Would you close down at midnight?
Yes.
Are you going to operate the business?
Yes, I am.
You're going to serve the drinks?
Yes, I am.
Hey, man, child, get that woman out of here, man. She is going. She is going. Okay. Take her out.
Who is?
Okay, I'm sorry.
I, you know, I got to do what...
Got to do what you got to do. Got a motion? I need a motion to, on this, this item.
But we don't want to make a commitment. We just got to vote on the motion.
Well, District Two's got, you know, I got to do a motion to deny.
Have a motion, have a motion on the floor to deny. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed?
Three. There were three.
Three? In the now?
Let's see. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Rest of four. Okay, motion carries. All right, you got to have a positive.
Okay, the motion to deny is, it fails three to six, which leaves the supposition that there's a positive motion.
Okay.
Okay, but I want to make, hello, I want to make sure we got in the record that exotic lounge is to be closed at midnight. What are your hours of operation? What days do you plan on operating?
I haven't decided. I was going, we Wednesday through being closed on Sunday.
Wednesdays, Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays. Okay, so, closed at midnight, and we want to bring it back to the 30, 60-day review on a cost of service. If we have any issue with that, you know...
30 and 60 days?
Well, 30-day first, and then a 60-day review.
Take advantage of this opportunity.
Subject two, closing at midnight on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and a 30-day review, then a 60-day review, and she won't be open any other days.
Right. And I want to make this last comment. This council just went out on a limb to support you and this organization. We normally don't go against our council members. Mr. Bradley, represent District Two. We want to give you an opportunity, but we want you to hold up and do, run business within Montgomery the right way. We want to see things done decently and in order. In 30 days, we do a review. If you're doing the right thing, you got to prove to the neighborhood that you're there to do business and to be a good steward of what you're trying to do. We want to give you the opportunity, but it's up to you to keep the opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Okay. Next item?
Mr. President.
We have, we don't have a vote, Mr. President.
Can I just say one thing from over here, one also?
Yeah, Mayor.
I was speaking out of turn just a little bit. My count, my staff hasn't heard this. One thing that Ms. Ziegler dealt with, in my looking, this was also a reverse business license process. What I, what I want to do is to support those small business people who are out there trying to open up businesses and create jobs for their, this entire community and trying to bring services here. One of the things that, that we're doing, and I want to work with the council on, is to see if we can go through a process where people can get approval before they put so much money into a entity, and then we come back and we deny. So, that's something we're working on from the city side.
I agree.
The first step should have been to go and speak with the neighborhood association.
I, I, but I, but I agree, but I also, I also want them to get approval from, from y'all, and we have to do a little better on our side from the business licensing process and the permitting process, I think, and that's may take some tweaking that the law may have to pass. So, that way, people don't have, and put money in it, and then come back and deny.
Right.
Hey, Mr. President.
Hang on, you just been...
This really, you got to think about what's meant, like, we just got, finished talking about crime and what we've had going on on Biltmore, the shipment on Biltmore, and some of the bars that we've had issues with. And this area is full of a lot of elderly people, and they just, for lack of a better term, gunshot, you know? And they just, they're scared, and they just figure if you have another venue where people stay out the wee hours in the morning, and they're drinking it up and then getting out in the community, they're scared of what's going to happen.
Well, we going to close them at 12, so...
Close at midnight?
Mr. President.
Okay.
Yeah.
Prove it.
Mayor, Ms. Blaylock's got something. When they sign the application, it says, if you can help me with...
That if they expend any funds, that there's no guarantee when they file an application with us, that there's no guarantee to...
That they'll get a license.
That the council is going to approve it, so that if they proceed, it's at their own expense, and they have to sign that form and they take it with them, so they're aware.
Okay, that's good.
Now, sir, counsel, counsel, y'all have made a motion, but you've not voted.
Mr. President?
You've made the motion. The motion is adopt subject two, closing at midnight Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, 30, and then 60-day review, and not open any other days. So, we need vote now.
Mr. President, that's my motion.
All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign?
Mr. Lyons, are you voting no?
voting no.
Three. The motion carries.
Mr. President, one last statement, and I agree with the mayor and what Ms. Blaylock was saying, but what I want to say is, if you going in business, you know, the proper thing to do, I know you're signing these leases and you're eager about getting into business, don't let the realtor, the realtor force you into a lease before you get approval from the council. You're tying up your money because someone's saying, I got this opportunity for you, and you're not, you're not running your business plan all the way through. So, this is for word to the wise. Be patient and figure out what are you going to do before you go out and sign and put your money into a building. Now, you locked in $60,000, $70,000, and you don't have a license.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item?
Item two, hearing on proposed ordinance rezoning the east portion of a parcel located on a northeast corner of Ray Thornton Road and Wisdomwood Road containing 3.85 acres from an O1 district to a B2Q district.
Doug Iguacen, are you here?
I'm, sir?
Doug.
Do you want Mr. Isaacson to come up?
Yeah, is he here?
Yeah.
PJ with the Water Works. Okay. I just, he signed up to be here, and I want to make sure he's here. Okay, now, tell us, you want to tell us what's going on? Go ahead.
He's wanting to rezone it, to do a storage facility there. The Planning Commission recommended to rezone unanimously.
Okay, all right. Any council members, you got any questions? I need a motion to adopt.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Item three, ordinance consenting to the disposal of real property owned by the Water Works and Sanitary Superior Board located along Washington Road and Fallinah Parkway.
Okay, this is, you need a motion?
Uh-uh, no, no.
I need, I need a...
Yeah, somebody come talk to us about this.
The, Mr. Guthrie, Guthrie from Water Works. Who's here from the Water Works Board? I got somebody signed up. Renato Guthrie?
Maybe it took us too long. They walked out.
They have left.
I like, well, then I like to ask if you carry it over.
Mr. President, before we carry it over, because what we discussed earlier, if it's this the Amazona property, do we have anyone in our planning division that wants to talk about this property?
This is Wesco. If you look at your ordinance, we're conveying the property to Wesco MGM LLC.
And who is Wesco?
Okay.
I think we've done, I think this is the one we brought up.
Yes, sir. I think you've done it before. If you'll look in that next paragraph, they've, you've previously consented. You look at the third paragraph, and because of the Water Works regulations, if they are, if it's not finished within a certain amount of time, they have to...
Okay, so this, we've already done it one time. We just redoing what we'd already done.
That mean they aren't supposed to show up?
Well, we've already given them that. I think they already... I think they already realized that we've already given that privilege. This is a piece of property...
We just extended it.
...involved with either one of the big projects. And it's the Water Works, huh? It's...
I believe that it's... Okay, come on, come on, come on. Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll tip to speak to this one, just so it does move forward.
I need a name.
I don't think the Water Board knew that. Cedric Campbell, good with Mrs. Kwood.
All right, tell us about Cedric.
All right, this is one of the mega projects that the chamber and developers have been working on, an opportunity that's coming forth to the city. It's, I think the Water Board didn't realize that someone was supposed to be here to speak to this one tonight, but this is one of the ones that's been in the works for a while, a lot of, pretty big opportunity.
Carry it over, yeah. Yeah, okay. All right, but it's a, it's a project coming that district?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Anybody question?
I'd love to say more, but...
Have a motion to spend rules, all in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you, Madam Brown.
Unanimous.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Unanimous.
Thank you all.
Item four, resolution approving and authorizing Mayor Reed to make application to HUD for substantial amendments under its emergency solutions grants, COVID-1 and 2 program.
Anybody got any questions on this item? I need a motion to spend rules.
Mr. President, motion to suspend rules?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item five, resolution authorizing Mayor Reed to make application to the Alabama Historic Commission for the Certified Local Government Grant Assistance.
Need a motion to spend rules?
Mr. President, motion to suspend rules?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item six, application for a lounge retail liquor class two package license doing business as GoPuff at 627 South Decatur Street.
Just John Millage?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm John Millage with the firm of James Pittman, and I have Ms. Amy Fix with me. She is the store manager for our Montgomery location. We are GoBrands, we are a home delivery service. We've been in, operating here in Montgomery for about six months, strictly delivering groceries and health and beauty aids, and we have an application that would allow us to also deliver beer, wine, and spirits. And the way the law is written, it requires us to obtain a package store license, but we're not a package store, we are a home delivery service.
Okay. This is a... All right, very good. Let me move on. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. Okay. Seeing none, the public hearing's been held. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. President, motion to suspend rules?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, raise your...
Mr. Lyons, did you go?
I did.
Okay.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business.
Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven, application for a lounge retail liquor class one license doing business as Truth Hookah Lounge at 109 South Port Street.
Representative for the Hookah Lounge, please? Your name through the record, please?
Camellia Jackson.
Okay, Ms. Jackson. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward this time. Seeing none, the public hearing's been held, Department of Public Counsel, Ms. Johnson?
Mr. President, motion to suspend rules?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Mr. Calhoun?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.